I'm going to call a special meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Senate will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back, Alderman O'Brien.
Hey.
Nice to see you.
Good to be on the right side of the law.
Happy to have you.
Hi, buddy.
How are you doing?
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Sennett.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. I am going to turn the public hearing over to the Chair of the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight we have a public hearing on R. 240333 proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health. So members of the public will have two areas where we have testimony in favor, we'll have that twice, and testimony in opposition. So when you come to the mic, please state your name and address, and then you get two minutes to speak. Okay, so I'm going to call for testimony in favor. If you are in favor, please come to the mic. And more time in favor. Do we have testimony in opposition?
Come up to the microphone.
Good evening, President Wiltshire, Board of Alderman, and I guess citizens of Nashua. We appreciate this opportunity to bring additional facts and references from the public health literature to inform you decision about the legislation being proposed. Time limits do not allow us to address all misconceptions from prior presentations and PowerPoints, so we will focus on three main reasons why we oppose this legislation in its present form. First, social determinants of health. There is no question that addressing social determinants of health -- oops, I forgot to introduce myself. Stephanie Wolf-Frozenblum, member of the Board of Health, 47 Berkeley Street.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Sorry, just too anxious. So, social determinants of health, there is no question that addressing social determinants of health is fundamental for improving health and reducing health inequities. So, you would have been rightfully concerned when it was previously stated, quote, "There is no member of the Board of Health who is qualified by their profession's training to advise on social health issues." We would like to dispel that notion. I will provide you with a copy of my remarks as well as an abbreviated CV, which notes that I hold a master's degree from Carnegie Mellon School of Public Policy and Management. This education has helped me to engage meaningfully in efforts to improve the health of our community. One example is when I served as the Senior Administrative Lead of Greater Nashua for New Hampshire's federal waiver redesign program designed to address behavioral health needs and to enhance health outcomes for mental health and substance abuse disorder through integrated care models with an emphasis on the social determinants of health. It was also stated that because of a need for an understanding of the social determinants of health, that members of the Board of Health were deferring to public health staff on crucial social health issues. This is my seventh year on the Board, and I am at a loss to recall such an instance. Regularly, Board of Health members and staff use their respective training and experience to engage in respectful and collaborative dialogue in service to our community. According to the World Health Organization, social determinants of health not only include access to quality and affordable healthcare services, but they also include such factors as education and early childhood development, food and housing insecurity, income and job insecurity, and the physical environments in which people work and live. It is for this reason that the National Association of County and City Health Officials suggested in a recent report that when adding members, the Board should look to key community sectors, not only healthcare, but also business and the faith communities. At present, there are eight full-time nurses in our public health department, not including our Director Bobby Bagley, who is also a nurse. Our valued and diverse staff hold many relevant educational degrees. These include four with a degree in psychology, one with a master's in behavioral health, and one who is a master's prepared and clinically licensed social worker. This complement of staff and Board of Health members has served us well for the challenges and responsibilities of the recent past and present, as evidenced by our successful national reaccreditation. If you add members to the Board of Health rather than duplicating expertise that already exists, please consider that the community may best be served by adding members from the business sector and the faith communities, or even the educational sector. While it is true that the composition of the staff and the Board of Health could change, meaning the future needs of our community would reasonably depend on our ability to be flexible in Board of Health appointees rather than to be bound by the prescriptive language embedded in the proposed legislative change to the city charter. Finally, experts in the U.S. Chamber of Commerce's Institute for Organization Management note that, quote, "Things that matter the most about Board size are governance efficiency and producing desired results. Larger Boards require more support staff, are more difficult to administer, orient and schedule, especially if there may be a need to call an emergency meeting. As such, it's important to carefully consider the purpose of enlarging the Board. Your local Board of Health meets more than 12 times per year. This makes us more active than 90% of Boards of Health nationally." Here is a partial list of activities that contributed to our successful reaccreditation: Develop policies that reflect evidence-based practices and improve public health while consistent with local, state, federal laws and rules; Set short- and long-term priorities and strategic plans; Set and evaluate goals and measurable outcomes for improving community health; Supporting a culture of quality improvement; Setting standards for performance and ethical practice and engaging legal counsel as appropriate; Building and strengthening community partnerships through education and engagement; And advocating for necessary funding and sound fiscal practices to sustain public health activities. As always, the Board encourages and at times invites attendance at meetings of those with additional expertise and perspectives, including our standing invitation to the public to appear and comment. However, given the scope of the Board's oversight and advisory responsibilities, it is important that any Board of Health appointee not only bring new perspectives or skill sets, but also that they have a broad understanding of the principles of policy development, the science of quality improvement, and standards of ethical practice, to name a few. As we have offered in the past, we would welcome the opportunity to work together with members of the Board of Alderman to create a meaningful framework for the future size and composition of the Board of Health in order to meet the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I will continue with testimony in opposition.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Capeta, physician at Dartmouth-Hitchcock, Board of Health member, in 2300 Southwood Drive. I stand here before you initially to read from our chairperson, Dr. Tony Storrs, who's out of the country at the moment, and I had -- understand, I had permission to read that on behalf of him. Mayor Donches, this goes before us, but before I start, actually, on a personal note, my wonderful colleague in a showing of her true dedication to what we do on our small Board of Health is -- this is her birthday today. She's foreseen the cake and the ice cream that her grandchildren may be giving her till a later hour in the evening, and now she can actually drink at 21, and it doesn't get any better than this. So, thank you, Stephanie. So, Mayor Donches, President Wiltshire, Board of Alderman, my colleagues on the Board of Health, Director Bagley, and the citizens of Nashua. Thank you for allowing my statement to be read into the record. I'm currently out of the country and trying to get home, but that's a big effort at this time. I would like to speak against the legislation to expand the Board of Health. I have gone on record against this idea. The last time it was defeated, and for all the same reasons. None of these reasons have changed. However, I'd like to focus on a new issue. As the Board of Health knows, Board of Alderman certainly knows, the Public Health Department was just recertified and now has a five-year accreditation. The Department and Board of Health are extremely proud of this accomplishment. The staff under Director Bagley worked extremely hard to tabulate and document all the necessary data for this project while still performing their daily duties. I have been told that some believe that the Board of Health had nothing or little to do with the process. This is incorrect. Each doctor took approximately one-third of the information being submitted to the recertification committee and spent four to eight weeks reviewing and commenting on their portions of the documents. Each doctor worked working independently, found serious deficiencies regarding the ethics section. All three doctors have been trained in ethics in their chosen field, and each brings a different perspective to the Board of Health. An ad hoc committee was formed last fall, and under the outstanding leadership of Dr. Stephanie Wolf-Frozenblum and assisted by myself, Dr. Charles Capeta, we're currently developing the Framework of Ethics Protocol for the National Department of Public Health. This is an excellent example of how the Board of Health utilizes its resources to assist in information gathering and working as a team to accomplish a task at hand. Just like we do with Dr. Alexander Gronik in infectious diseases or other public health issues, it's what doctors do every day in our practices: seek out information, collaborate, and refer when necessary. Another point I'd like to make is Alderwoman Timmons, our liaison, who did an excellent job in the oral portion of the recertification process by answering all questions asked and supplying her expanded comments. Since I've been on the Board of Health for a significant amount of time, I was able to use my expertise to give a history of the Public Health Department's journey over the last almost 30 years. The interviewers had only positive comments on the continuity of the Board and its governance. There was no mention at that time or any communication since of any need for or recommendation to modify in any way the Board of Health. There wasn't any mandate for a social worker model, or that a future change was coming. In fact, when reviewing the National Association of County Health Officials' website and resource pages, along with a profile report, Chapter 2, Jurisdiction and Governance, Pages 19 to 26, there is no mention, recommendation, or mandate to change the composition of the Board of Health. This proposed change can only be viewed as self-serving and political. Back in the mid-'90s, I said I would only serve if we left politics at the door. Some 25 years later, we saw during COVID what can happen when politics is allowed to dictate healthcare and bend science. Please vote no on this stage, since it's precedent. Thank you for your time and consideration. Again, I'm sorry I can't be there with you, but I'm confident Dr. Wolf-Frozenblum and Capeta can answer your questions. And I have copies of Dr. Storrs's statement that I just read for you. Am I allowed to then now change to my personal statement? Is that okay, my reading? Thank you. Well, again, hi. Good evening. My name is Chuck Capeta. My address is 2300 Southwood Drive. As stated in my comments to most of you last month in this same Aldermanic Chamber on this topic, I also stand here opposed to the legislation to expand the Board of Health in its present form. I've been the school physician for the Nashua and Hollis Brookline Schools for the past 30 years and a proud member of the Nashua Public Health Department Board of Health for the past 10. In my role on the Board of Health, I sit with two other doctors with over 70-plus years of healthcare experience and our Board of Health Directors, a fully qualified RN who has her master's in public health. Each of us have an extensive and diverse background in social health determinants, and you can't be a healthcare provider without knowledge and experience in how issues of family life, finances, access to healthcare, transportation, housing, sickness, behavioral health, and every issue in between plays a role in our lives and the differences between wellness and illness. In your elected role in serving the people of Nashua, each of you have taken an oath of office to protect, advocate, and support each of your constituents. In our roles as healthcare providers, be it a nurse, a dentist, or as physicians, we too share these same common goals of educating, advocating, defending, and supporting each of the families and patients we serve to the best of our abilities through their individual and collective life experiences, both good and bad. One small highlight that I'd like to share of our accomplishments that is separate from the recent reaccreditation process is our Board of Health selection to be speakers at the 2022 National Meeting of the Local Boards of Health in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Director Bagley and I led a breakout session on our response to COVID and our struggles with the mask mandate that so many of you in this room were also part of. It was universally well-received by those who attended, and we look forward to doing similar presentations in the future if selected to do so. Our small, three-member Board of Health could not have done any of this without our team at the Nashua Public Health Department and the Aldermanic support of our initiatives during this stressful time, and again, personally and for all three of us, thank you all so very much. The fundamental issue for me with the present legislation as it's written, however, is seems to be a gross oversimplification of the issue, which has painted the Board of Health members as somehow opposed to social issues, social concern, and most of all, social workers or nurses. This couldn't be farther from the truth. At Dartmouth-Hitchcock, where I've worked for the past 35 years, we had an in-house social worker in our pediatric department for over 25 years, and I could not imagine my professional career without her by my side and for all her outstanding efforts to help thousands of families problem solve, do home visits, lend a shoulder to cry on, et cetera, et cetera. Likewise, my opposition to this legislation is not meant to be in any way, shape, or form a slant to my fellow nursing colleagues, whose unique and amazing skill sets are not only vital in my office, but also throughout the practice of medicine. I love working with nurses, be it in the office, floor, or at the hospital, and they are indeed unsung heroes, in my opinion, for all that we do. My number-one reason for opposition is its way this whole topic was handled. During my 10 years as a Board of Health member, we have worked so well with the mayor's office, the Nashua Alder, the Board of Health liaison representative, including most recently Representative Timmons, and the Nashua Public Health Department on a wine range of topics, and I consider you, all of you in this room, friends on so many things we've been asked to do, be it the mask mandate, COVID precautions, food safety, housing support, et cetera. It's a true collaboration and respect on both sides for what we know and what we don't know. This town, however, it had a different feel. There was no approaching the Board of Health to say, "Hey, have you ever given a thought to increasing the size or the makeup of the Board for this or that concern?" Instead, we had no warning this legislation was coming. PowerPoint presentations were made to the Alderman that did not include a courtesy invitation to the Board of Health members, and as such, were asked to blindly defend our positions, as we did last time and tonight, as if there's a power struggle to defeat us and beat us down. I speak for myself, but I know for Dr. Storrs and Dr. Wolf-Frozenblum, we have no personal agendas in serving on the Board. We have no egos attached to this position, and nor do we buff it up to use in our CVs. We are simply here to serve in any way we can, nothing more, nothing less. I am so honored to be a small cog in a bigger healthcare wheel like the Board of Health for one simple reason. I love what I do. I love being a pediatrician, and I love being part of this Board of Health, where I've learned so many things from other care-providing professionals on how to problem solve, how to think outside the box, and handle real-life issues they definitely never teach in medical school or nursing school. Thank you.
Additional testimony in opposition of R. 24033?
Good evening. My name is Paula Johnson, and when this was at the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, I was the one that came out and spoke out against it when the four nurses were here, the former nurses. You know, just listening to -- I might not have agreed with that department during COVID, but I respect them for coming here and what they're saying here. You know, it would have been nice, I guess, if you sat down with that department and went over this and said to them, "Do you need any additional personnel?" And I hope that you vote against this and sit down with the Health Department, because even though I didn't agree with Bobby Bagley, I still respect her, and since she's the director, that's where you go. You don't just ram something like this and then have them come out and defend themselves. They shouldn't be defending themselves. Whether I agree with their position or not, they're a separate entity, and they should have been respected. Thank you.
Any additional testimony in opposition? I'll call for testimony in favor again. Second time, testimony in favor of R. 24033. Do we have any additional testimony in opposition of R. 24033? And I will call again for testimony in opposition.
Thank you, Alderwoman Kelly. I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2433 at 7:23 PM. Alderman O'Brien, do I have a motion?
Motion is to adjourn, this press report.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We adjourn at 7:23 PM. I'm going to call a regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Derek Thibodeau will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll. Call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Sennett.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the Board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. So every year, in honor of National Volunteer Week, the Mayor's Volunteer Recognition Committee bestows the Gate City Light Award. Now, this is something we started, actually, when I was previously mayor. This award recognizes an agency and its volunteers for giving their time in the spirit of community and caring and for making significant contributions to the people of Nashua. This year, Friends of the Nashua Public Library is the winning organization. This volunteer group raises critical funds for the library, which are used to offer concerts on the plaza, movies, as well as a summer reading program, museum passes, and needed equipment and furniture. The Friends of the Library raised $30,000 at their annual book sale just recently, with people waiting in line before they opened. I would also like to congratulate the runners-up Marguerite's Place, who make a significant impact on behalf of women and children in our community, as well as the recipients of the Unsung Hero Award, the Gate City Bike Co-op, who have provided hundreds of refurbished bicycles to those who might not be able to obtain one on their own. So I want to congratulate all those people. Now, Sarah Caesar, who I think is here somewhere, when we get to the recognition portion of the agenda, will be making the award because she and United Way were very instrumental in deciding who was most worthy this year. I also wanted to mention that some city employees who've been recognized for doing a particularly good job. The Lions Club makes Employee of the Year Awards for various departments. This year, the DPW Employee of the Year by the Lions is Matt Moro, who is a collection equipment operator, and the Public Health Employee of the Year is Lisa Vazquez, who is a behavioral health strategist at the Department of Public Health. I wanted to thank, of course, the Lions Club for making the awards and congratulate our two employees and thank them for all the service that they do provide to the city of Nashua and its residents. In addition, Dory Brown, the city's energy manager, was recognized as the 2024 Young Professional Energy Champion at the New Hampshire Energy Week Award Ceremony a couple of weeks ago, and Kim Bernard, who's the chief public health nurse at Public Health, received the Excellence in Nursing Award from the New Hampshire Nursing Association just last week, and she was featured in New Hampshire Magazine. And Dan Healy, who's our city clerk right here, he and his fellow New Hampshire city clerks received recognition from Governor Sununu in honor of Municipal Clerks Week, and they were written up a couple of weeks ago in the Union Leader. So I want to thank all of our employees and everyone, our volunteers, for doing such a good job on behalf of our citizens. There was one thing I wanted to mention on the agenda, which is something that we're asking for a second reading on. This is a recommendation made by the city's Veterans Committee, which is that we dedicate the bridge that is part of the Veterans Memorial Parkway. We dedicate the bridge to Barney Barbera, who was a very active veteran. Some of you are familiar with him, I'm sure. The ceremony for the dedication is scheduled for June 4. Again, this is a Veterans Committee recommendation, and so I would ask that you consider a second reading for that resolution when you get to that point of the agenda. Finally, Alderwoman Klee and Alderman Dowd and I attended the opening of the Lost Cowboy Brewery and Restaurant out on Amherst Street, definitely a big addition to the city and to that corridor. I'm sure they're going to be successful because there are a lot of people going and trying to get in, and it's part of the Buckley Group of Restaurants. So congratulations to them, and they've done a really good job. And that's all I have, Madam President, unless people have questions for me.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I've said this a couple of times in the past, but the city employees here, the Dory, Kim, all these others that get all these awards, these are types of folks that could go off and run large cities, and we're
I've said this a couple of times in the past, but the city employees here, the Dory, Kim, all these others that get all these awards, these are types of folks that could go off and run large cities, and we're very thankful to have them here, and I'm so glad to keep on hearing about their achievements. Clearly, we already have the city clerk making the newspaper as well, and I just want to express my thanks to, like, the talent that the city has in regards to the professionals that we have working here. And then to the Gate City Light Awards, they're all great, but I have a special place in my heart for Margarite's Place. My company sponsors their events quite routinely, and we have a great partnership in helping connect them with outpatient counseling, and I just wanted to say thank you for all of that, to make sure that everyone gets connected to healthcare when they need it, especially when they're at some of the most vulnerable points in their life. And lastly, I hear if you really need a reservation to any of the Mike Buckley's restaurants, you got to go through Alderman Tebow. That's an inside joke from Facebook. He'll deny it.
I will contact him in the future.
Anyone else response to the remarks of the mayor? Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to comment on a couple of the things that the mayor said, specifically about the DPW, Matt Morrow. I had mentioned that he, as well as Lisa Vazquez, I had gotten the Lions Award, but Matt really stuck in my mind because when they talked about him, and I think I mentioned this before, I'm not sure if the mayor was here at that time, that he is so dedicated to his truck that when there was a scratch on the truck, he went and got the paint matched himself and took care of it. And he cleans that truck himself, and I think that it was, his supervisor kind of mentioned that the floor of his truck is so, and this is his landfill truck, I guess you would call it, I don't want to call it a garbage truck. You could eat off the floor, not that they would recommend it, but that you could do that. And I want to say that I've been to the Lost Cowboy twice already now. It is definitely worth the going, but try to do off-hours.
Anyone else? Alderman Dowd.
Just real quick, they aren't fully staffed yet, so they're not filling all their tables at the moment, but they were trying to not do a formal opening to get up to speed, but the word spread so fast, they're packed every night.
It's not a bad problem to have.
No.
Okay. Recognition period.
Gate City Light Award.
I'm going to recognize Mayor Donches.
Well, Sarah, is Sarah Caesar's going to come up and make the award?
Thank you. Shall I stand here?
Sure.
Okay. So the first award, as Mayor Donches said, goes to the Friends of the Library. So if somebody from the library would like to come and pick up the award. It's wrapped up. There you go. That's a congratulations. And then the second award, which is the Runner-Up Award, goes to Margarite's Place. You're welcome. And then we have the Gate City Bike Co-op, which is winning the Unsung Hero Award. Normally, we... There you go. Thank you. And thank you all.
Thank you. Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of April 23rd, 2024. The accepted placed on file and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Sam Dervy, Planning Manager, regarding referral from Board of Aldermen on Resolution R-24-050, authorizing the sale of a portion of Veterans Memorial Parkway right of way.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have three people who have signed up. The first one is Stephanie Wolf Rosenblum.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman Wiltshire and Alderman and Citizens of Nashville. I have given more extensive remarks during the prior hearing, but I stand in opposition to the proposed legislation for three reasons. One is that this present Board of Health has demonstrated itself to be effective and efficient, and the second is that expertise that was stated as a reason for increasing the Board of Health is inconsistent with national standards and with expertise that exists on the Board of Health, including the fact that I have extensive experience in social determinants of health and a master's from the Carnegie Mellon School of Public Policy and Health, as well as the fact that we already have eight nurses, not including Director Bagley, as well as a clinically licensed and master's prepared social worker and other behavioral health experts, some of whom have been recognized this evening. And therefore, prescribing any additional members to be of a certain variety, I think, will prevent the Board of Aldermen from making flexible decisions for the future needs of the community. So I would very much encourage welcome and ask that the Board of Aldermen consider working with the Board of Health. We were not consulted regarding this change in the composition and size of the board, and we would very much encourage that that happen for the future needs of the community. Thank you.
Sorry, Charles Capetta?
Oh, hi, Charles Capetta, 2300 Southwood Drive. I also stand in opposition as a Board of Health member for the reasons stated in my recent testimony, and I also agree with, I mean, we love what you guys do. We're at this, we serve on your behalf, and I just ask that we get back to the time that we did that. This time was very unprofessional, in my opinion. It was done with a subcurrent of innuendos and plots that came across very badly, and I would ask that, you know, you just, just treat us how we like to treat you, because we love what you do. We couldn't function without you. And so we have wonderful liaisons from Tom to now Gloria, to everyone in between. So I thank you, but I also would just ask that we reconsider what you're doing tonight, and I, like Stephanie just mentioned, would like to just look at the, if we want to add people, let's do a thoughtful approach to this. Let's have a little committee to say, okay, what do we need? What are our, what are we looking for? How do we want to represent our constituents? And how best can we serve with adding more people if we need to, and what skill sets do they bring to the table? Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Paula Johnson, 15 Westbourne Drive. How was I going to speak on that, but I'm going to say something quickly again. Shame on you for going behind their backs. Just shame, shame. Next time, work with them, because they're another body here in this city that helps our community, and they need to be worked together as partnership, not against each other as rivals. I'm here to talk about R-24-035. That's that $2,200,000 that was left over from when you built that administrative building for the Department of Public Works there, which I've been told that it hasn't been big enough to house all the administrative people in there. And now we're going to do a design to take away our Public Works Department and move it up West Hollis Street, that's so congested as it is with the traffic. Alderman knows, Alderman Jettie knows how congested West Hollis Street is now. You're going to be moving the trucks from down on Riverside all the way up West Hollis Street to landfill. My concern is that, are we going to build something that's not going to be big enough again, and then we're going to have to spend more money? That's about a $30 million project, so that's about one year of your $30 million that you can spend on bonding gone. And so we're going to do another study, and what I read is not something that's going to happen immediately, but probably down the road, so we're going to spend $2 million now to do a study for something down the road that we might not need it. The other issue I have, that we're going to give probably another sheet of ice, one or two sheets of ice to Congress, ice. When I sat on this board with Alderman Wiltshire, they got a buck a year on our land. They rented from us, a buck a year. Now, is that in the best interest of the taxpayers? Obviously not. So I'm saying, I don't want another catastrophe, you know? Anything like this that's going to be against the taxpayers, or if we're going to give, we're doing this because they need sheets of ice, and this, and is this another building that the Public Works to build, building for the street department, that we let deferred maintenance go, just like the school department? So I would say, before you vote on this money, do your homework, see what's wrong with that building. Has it been deferred maintenance that's gone by here, that we didn't take care of it? So we keep building more, newer and new buildings because we don't care of the, take care of the buildings that we already have, and the buildings are falling down because we don't do deferred maintenance. So let's put our money where it belongs and keep these buildings going, and so we don't have to keep building new things because we don't take care of them. Thank you very much.
Communications requiring final approval?
None.
Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
Cultural Connections Committee, Ada Nadir, new appointment, term to expire May 28th, 2027, 130 Flagstone Drive, Apartment 4, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03063. Meta Vornum, new appointment, term to expire May 28th, 2027, 22 Killian Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03062. Conservation Commission, Dale Carruth, new appointment, term to expire June 11th, 2027, 65 Ilgan Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03060. Mine Falls Advisory Committee, David Silva, new appointment, term to expire June 3rd, 2027, 400 Sherburne Road, Pellon, New Hampshire, 03076. Greg Andrew Skavage, reappointment, term to expire June 30th, 2026, 3 Caraway Lane, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03063. Planning Board, Cameron Green, reappointment, term to expire May 31st, 2027, 82A Amherst Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03064. Adam Barley, reappointment, term to expire March 31st, 2027, 3 Scotia Way, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03062.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 1st Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 2nd, 2024 Ad Hoc Capital Debt Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 8th, 2024 Joint Meeting of Police Commissioners and Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Third reading of R-24-033, proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to adding two additional members to the Board of Health.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that a report be filed with the city clerk to effect that the text as stated in the resolution is the proposed charter amendment to be submitted to the state officials in accordance with RSA 49-B4, and I would like to briefly speak to it.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate the members of the Board of Health speaking today, and I just want to clarify, in no way did I want to intend that their personal training was not sufficient to complete their current functioning on the Board of Health, but I would like to remind my colleagues, this is the Board of Health from here to the future, and where one physician may have training in one particular field in addition to their physician's training, doesn't mean the future board's physicians that are appointed would have that same training, even though that the board members that are serving now are quite well-educated. My goal of enshrining the nursing and social work is that it's always there. We don't have to look for someone with an MPH in addition to or anything like that, but it's always there. Second, I would like to add, I'm not a big fan of misinformation, but I most certainly did meet with the chairman of the Board of Health prior to this legislation, even seeing the day of light here at the Board of Aldermen. I specifically said in my email that I may not be willing to withdraw the legislation, but I'm certainly willing to talk about changes, and that was not the conversation I had with the chairman. When the chairman, when I told the chairman during our meeting that I would not be withdrawing it, he said, "Thank you for coming," and I left. There was no conversation about the Chamber of Commerce being added on. I would have loved that conversation, folks. I would have loved it. I would have dragged this out for another year, but that's not what happened. That's just not the facts. And the chairman's not here. Maybe he didn't share that information with his colleagues, but also, in addition, the president referred this legislation to both boards. They didn't have a public discussion to take a vote. They didn't have a joint meeting with administration, Personnel Administrative Affairs. So I'm flabbergasted that my character is being, you know, targeted when it didn't happen that way. That was being proposed by members of the Board of Health tonight. And the only purpose of this, to add these two members, is to enrich the Board of Health with health professions that are already doing this work on other health boards, whether it's public health, hospital boards, community health boards, federally qualified health centers, it's already happening. And we're one of the few Board of Health that only have three members, and that can be difficult when there's a quorum. But I just, I'm very, I found it very bizarre that the chairman didn't take the time to communicate the information to his colleagues about the meeting prior to this even happening, and documented email that I said I'm willing to discuss changes to it. And that never happened. I was just asked to leave when I went and withdraw it, and it was very frustrating to hear those comments. Of all boards, of all boards, I expect the Board of Health to present correct, accurate information. Thank you.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Melvane Moran, but I didn't see it that way. I'm the liaison from the Board of Health, and I did not know about this whole legislation until after the fact, and you apologized. So I don't, I don't understand what you're saying, and I was there, I didn't hear what you heard. So I'm going to read a letter straight from the Public Health Accreditation Board, and it went to Director Bagley, and it says, "Dear Director Bagley, on behalf of the Public Health Accreditation Board Staff and Board of Directors, I want to express our severe, sincere congratulations on your Health Department reaccreditation. This achievement demonstrates your commitment to transparency, accountability, and a culture of equity improvement. We are so proud of you for putting your work out for peers' review against national health department performance and standards. In close, please find your plaque, which we hope you will hang it in a place in your honor of Health Department. We also enclose your accreditation certificate for you to use in your publicity, grant application, and other types of communication about your Health Department. Best wishes as you continue to promote and protect the health of the public." Now, what I was upset about is because it was an after-effect with me, and I was at a meeting, and it didn't go well. I don't, I don't know what meeting you were referring to, but the meeting I was with, it didn't go well because you refused to withdraw after we said, you said, "I'm going to apologize to you, to you, but I'm not going to apologize to anybody else." That's what I understand, and I think that we did a very good job with the reaccreditation. I believe that three members of the board were sufficient, other, if not, than the accreditation team would have told us so. And I would have appreciated if you did come to me first and asked what was my opinion, what did I think, but I was caught off guard. I just was caught off guard, and I was disappointed, so I would not be supporting this legislation.
Alderman Sennett?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Corporation Counsel, if I may... Through you to Corporation Council, if I may, I'm just curious, based on the motion that's before us, where this motion is to file the report with the city clerk, at what stage are we in this at the moment? If we vote in the affirmative on this motion tonight, is this still coming before us again for another vote? Or does that basically take it to the next step of going on the ballot next November?
Well, it's the next step, but there are a few more steps before you get to vote on whether it goes on the ballot. Basically, this is to send the report to the city clerk. The city clerk then forwards this up to three state officials, the Director of Revenue Administration, the Secretary of State, and the Attorney General. Those three will report back as to whether they believe it is violative of the state constitution or any state statutes. If so, then if violates state statutes or the constitution, we can't do it. If, there's a procedure where we could challenge that if that were the case. But if they report back that, yes, this is something that is appropriate for a municipal charter amendment, and it's not violative of the constitution or state statute, then this board has to vote as to whether or not to place it on the ballot.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. So I hope that, you know, me and Alderman Moran can stay friends after this, despite his comment earlier. So I, I do feel it's been a little political, and maybe not with Alderman Moran, but I've had people come up to me and try to lobby for this. And they were all state reps, so obviously there's some, they're used to doing that. So obviously, they're, they're coming at me to try to vote for, for it. You know, when I hear the speakers tonight, and, you know, there was a time when an Alderman once said, who's no longer here, "We're looking for a solution that, looking for a solution for a problem we don't have," right? And that's, that's where I feel we are. You know, the Board of Health spoke tonight, they have nine nurses, including Bobby Bagley, nine, on, on the Department of Health. That's a pretty good bunch of nurses. And out of Alderman Moran's mouth today said, "Kim Bernard, congratulations, she won an award." She's one of the nurses, and she's fantastic. And they have someone that's got social and mental health therapy background as well on, in the Department of Health. So they don't have to be on the board, they use those people in the Department of Health to make decisions, right? So I don't see the need to add people to this board when we have all that talent in the city already there. You know, this came up once before, and at that point, it did get defeated. I have a feeling this time it may go through. I do want to read a letter as well from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, directed, sent to Bobby Bagley. Dear Bobby Bagley, on behalf of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, we are pleased to congratulate the City of Nashville Division of Public Health and Community Services on its reaccreditation by the Public Health Accreditation Board. Your achievement conveys your organization's commitment to continuous improvement of Health Department services provided to the people in your jurisdiction. Participation in the national accreditation program is a meaningful way to demonstrate accountability to national standards. Your reaccreditation lets your partners and community know that you have continued to strengthen and advance your performance since receiving initial accreditation five years ago. CDC recognizes the time and effort that leaders and staff members from your Health Department dedicate to improving performance around the national standards and maintaining your accreditation status. Reaccreditation through PHAB is an impressive accomplishment, and we commend the City of Nashville Division of Public Health and Community Services for this achievement. Sincerely, Mandy K. Cohen, MD, MPH, Director of the CDC, and Leslie Ann Dauphin, PhD, Director of National Center for STLT, Public Health Infrastructure and Work for CDC. You know, I thought the board, the board members today spoke great. I think, you know, if they don't want it, and Bobby Bagley and her department doesn't want it, it doesn't really make sense because they have the talent there already. I don't see why we're going the next step on this. So I'm probably, I'm not going to support this tonight as it's, as it's written. So thank you.
I had Alderman Lopez next.
Yeah, just as a point of personal privilege, in the letter and public comment, and then again by the previous speaker, it was mentioned it was defeated. So I don't know if that is referring to the time that I tried to bring it up three years ago. I would not characterize that as defeated. I was asked by the Board of Health to withdraw it, which I did as a courtesy, and with the understanding that they were going to take up exploration of the issue themselves at some point. They never did. And similarly, the objections that were brought up in public then were that I never brought it to them either. And I did. I brought it up in several meetings, and it was never entertained by the chair as worthy of discussion, as, as a topic to be discussed. So my experience has been they are not willing to explore this. I don't know that there's even a clear understanding from the Board of Health as to what this legislation is for. And that is to put on the ballot to let the people decide. So, I mean, there's plenty, there has been plenty of time to decide who should be on the Board of Health, if we're going to change it, if we're going to adjust it. And that conversation has not been had. And accusing this board of anything nefarious or underhanded is not only absurd in my mind, but for this situation where we've had multiple public meetings, we are in the middle of redoing a public hearing a second time, literally because we forgot to do the motion to send it up. It has all of these different levels of transparency and accountability. So acting as though we didn't invite them to meetings, or they didn't know about it, this was referred directly to their committee, and they had the right and the opportunity to see the agendas and the discussion topics at the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. They managed to find their way to the public comment one, but they didn't make it to the one that we had, you know, most recently. So I don't think it's fair to say that we've been hiding anything, or there's been anything underhanded that's been happening. I would say at most, there's been poor communication. But I would also point out that there's a lot of accusations and a lot of very willful communication being received. It is my impression that the liaison was at least aware of this legislation, because I had a conversation with her before it had its first reading to this effect. And the objection at that point was, you didn't write it before checking with me. Now it's moved to you doing this without checking. As liaison, I wouldn't have expected every single decision to have been run by me, especially considering I don't have any real control over the Board of Health. So they, they traditionally bring up issues and create agendas. I had a lot of objections in my first couple of terms there with where they were located, the access that the public had, and the documentation of their meetings. And those were things they needed to hear from the Board of Aldermen about in order to improve and change, to get those transparency and accountability accolades that they're proud of. We've been part of the Board of Health, too. We appoint every year these members. It is, first comes from the president, and then we're all confirming it at Personnel Administrative Affairs. So to act like we aren't working together is, I think, very one-sided. We typically take the recommendations that they have, when they're willing to have the discussion and entertain, you know, our referrals as serious enough to have a discussion. And finally, I would point out that the narrative is, again, that we have staff that are fully capable of doing nursing and social work. That's all well and good, but it ignores the very obvious fact that if you're on the Board of Health as a member, and a voting member, then maybe you have some input over what shows up on the agenda, such as the legislation deciding how many members there are. Because that was referred from this body, and it never got discussed by them in a formal way. The best we heard about was an informal discussion. So plenty of time for committee members, commissioners to come up and, and make public comment, but it doesn't reflect what they've actually discussed in their own meetings. I think that's why it's important to have people with specific disciplines represented in those areas. It was pointed out that several of the current members have backgrounds, particularly Dr. Wolf Rosenblum has a background in social work and accolades to that effect. It's also worth pointing out that the Board of Education, the Board of Health's makeup is two doctors and one member of the public. As the third member, she's not guaranteed to be in that spot as somebody with that background. She's an extra authority that we benefit from, where the first two didn't really contemplate that particular area of expertise. We are fortunate to have her experience, but we haven't written it into the actual makeup of the Board of Health. So I think it's worth pointing out that while those two specific components have been, at the same time criticized and endorsed by members of the Board of Health, the way they would be written would ultimately be decided by voters. And I think that's important for us all to remember, that ultimately, this decision does need to go to the voters. It does need to be something that everybody gets to weigh in, not just us, not just a special committee that's now being proposed now that we're, you know, actually getting serious about this. I think we need to hear from the public, and I think that needs to happen at the ballot.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to clarify something. We actually vote for the Board of Health at the inauguration, and it's every two years. That's when those members are elected. But the, the other thing, so it was brought up in public comment tonight that this was turning this political. And I, I want to just step back from that for a moment, because it's not 100% true. And I think that the context here is important. Everything that we do at this board is political. We're all elected officials. We all serve various terms, different constituencies. And so that by nature, anything that comes before this board and is decided on in this board is political decision. That being said, there is a difference between making a political decision and inserting politics into decision-making. So the difference between that is that in this proposal, we aren't changing the way the Board of Health is elected. It's still going to be elected every two years by the Board of Aldermen. We're not changing the way that, that it runs. We're not telling them that they have to do certain things. We're simply adding two members to that board who bring a particular area of expertise in each one of them. And as has been mentioned previously, those people don't currently have a seat at the table. Yes, they are asked their opinions, and they are a valuable resource, but they don't have a seat at the table, at least not on paper. So what this does is it adds that expertise in perpetuity to make sure that somebody with that background always has a seat at the table. And I think that's an important distinction. So yes, it's a political decision to put this on the ballot, to change the way that the makeup of the board is. However, we are not inserting politics into that decision by changing the way the Board of Health operates, by making it something that's voted on by the people every, every few years. None of that's changing. And so I think that's an important distinction that needs to be made. And for those reasons, that's why I'm supporting this tonight.
Alderman Dow.
First of all, I fully appreciate all the work that Bolton Warren does in, in healthcare. He's done a phenomenal job. He's got a great company that supports a lot of people. And I seriously don't think there's anything nefarious about the way he's trying to make this change. I do have some concerns. Couple is, you know, it's not like we've had an issue with the Board of Health. I think they've done a great job. And it seems like they've got accolades to that effect from several people. But the other thing that bothers me is I heard that there could have been other people added to this mix. And I, I think if we're going to make a change to the Board of Health, it should be collaborative. And I heard that we're not, they're not working together. Maybe, you know, it should be a sit-down and determine, because it may be a third person that you want to add to make it a full-rounded board. And, and I also haven't heard any, a lot of discussion about how other boards of health are structured. But I think they've done a great job. And I, and the other thing that concerns me is when we put a question on the ballot, first of all, about half the people don't vote on it because they don't even read it. And many people vote on it, and they don't even know what it means. Sounds good, so I'll vote for it. So I'm not sure how you make that story to the public to get a reasonable vote by putting it on the ballot. But I, I just have concerns about this, and for those reasons, I'm not going to support it tonight.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure if I'm misreading this resolution, and I don't know who to address, but it talks about five members, two, let me make sure I'm reading this right, five members, two of who shall be physicians, one shall be registered nurse, and one shall be a licensed social worker. I'm missing one person.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you. Attorney Bolton, do you have a comment on it?
The way it's written is just what wording gets changed or replaced. The wording that says one will be a citizen of Nashville is not being changed.
Okay.
So that, that provision is not being changed.
Okay, so that must be in a different paragraph. I apologize then. Thank you so much. May I continue?
Sure.
Thank you. When Alderman Lopez had originally put, a few years back, this somewhat of a resolution similar to this, I don't think we were prescriptive of it, but I backed him. And I'm still in favor of increasing the size of our Board of Health. In hearing what they had to say, my concern was if we suddenly decided that we needed to have a, some different type of thing, someone from faith-based or school or something like that. May I ask the question of Attorney Bolton?
Yes.
That would be, as long as they were resident of Nashville, we could fill that position with, with that fifth body, as long as it's a resident of Nashville, correct?
That fifth, there's no particular qualification other than being a resident of Nashville.
Okay.
So it could be another doctor, it could be a baker, a plumber, an electrician, a teacher.
Hopefully, somebody qualified for it, though. But yes, thank you. Those are just my questions.
Whatever the Board of Aldermen decides is an appropriate qualification.
Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, to say this isn't going to be political is crazy. We put something on the ballot. Anybody remember the police commission? Do we see any signs out there for police commission? Anytime you put something on the ballot, it will be, and I'm going to be disputed here in a second, it sounds like, but it will be. I mean, can I ask Alderman Moran, will he put, pay for any signs to say vote yes on question whatever? I'm guessing he probably would. Why wouldn't he? It's his, unless it's illegal, I don't know if it's illegal. But I'm assuming there'll be lobbies from both sides putting out signs. So that is political, and its nature is if signs are out and people are lobbying for something, that becomes political. So I don't know how we can say it's not political. It absolutely is. So, thanks.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I've considered the political implications of this one a lot. Something that keeps sticking out in my mind is if we're going to do this, there's no other way to do it. We, we can't change the city charter without putting it to a ballot question. We're not able to. So of course, there's going to be a political element to it. I think it's important to not lose sight of the fact that we're not changing the selection process, as Alderman Clemmons alluded to. We're not legislating anybody off the Board of Health if we decide to reappoint them. All we're doing is supplementing the professionalism of that board. I don't think that there's anything malicious behind this, or that in any way this is an indictment of the qualifications or the professionalism of that board. I still, amid all the discussions that we've had of this, see this as a response. Some have said a solution looking for a problem. There is a problem. The areas of expertise that nurses and social workers practice in is particularly predominant in public health today. And so rather than a solution in search of a problem, I think we need today. And so, rather than a solution in search of a problem, I think we need to recognize that problem and offer these folks a vote at the table. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I mean, again, going back to the political thing, as Alderman Senate said, we have no choice but to put this on the ballot if we want to do this. It has to be done through a charter change because it's in the charter. It's the only way to do it. So, the difference, though, because the police commission was brought up, and so I want to bring that difference. The difference between what was proposed when the police commission was being changed was that the entire process was going to change. Right now, the governor appoints the three police commissioners. There's an arm's length between the city and that board. It would have changed that dynamic so that the Board of Alderman, or the mayor, I'm sorry, and the board president would have appointed the commission, bringing it more local and definitely adding more politics into that process by the mere fact that you would have it be more localized instead of that arm's length with the governor. The difference between that and this, all we're doing is adding two people to that board. That's it. That's it. Now, you can say that that's political, and it is political in a sense that, yes, it has to be voted on by the charter. But it is not adding politics to the mix. And that's where I think people need to understand the difference. And if you don't, I don't know how better way to say this other than making something where the Board of Alderman or the citizens would directly influence how that board operates would be more political. We are not doing that. We are only adding two individuals to that board with certain areas of expertise. That's it.
Who hasn't spoken? Alderman Kelly.
I wasn't expecting to be called up next. Okay, thank you. So, I think that the argument for this has been pretty clear in terms of the types of expertise that would have a vote. As we've talked through this and the opportunities to talk about why these types of additions to the Board of Health would be helpful, I was struck by the types of interactions they have with people, social determinants of health, housing, all of the things that we are dealing with. And on the other side, what I've heard is simply we don't need more people. We have access to that, and that isn't a good enough reason for me to not put it in front of the voters and ask if they agree that this is something that should be looked at and that we should potentially add two people.
Alderman Jettie, did you have your hand up? No?
I did.
Okay, you're up.
Thank you. So, I'm going to vote for this. You know, I have a tremendous amount of respect for Dr. Wolf Rosenbloom and Dr. Capetta. And, you know, and I hate going against what they're asking us to do, but, you know, I just, you know, I respect everything that they've done. You know, they've served the Board of Health and the city very well for a number of years. And this is not in any way, you know, an indictment of the service that they've had. Nobody is saying that they haven't done a great job. I just see this as an opportunity for us to, if the voters decide, to add two additional people to help them do the job. Now, as good as they have been, you know, they can't guarantee they're going to be here for the next several years. They can't guarantee they're going to be here for the next week. So, you know, we've got to be, I think this is proactive, you know, adding people to the board makes it easier to have a quorum. It, you know, it encourages, you know, more people to be involved, to be experienced, to, you know, assist the Health Department. So, I just see it as we're, you know, giving them a couple of extra people to help them. And, you know, they haven't said anything to me which makes me think that that's a bad idea. So, I'm, you know, I apologize to them. But I think this is, if the voters choose to do this, I think it would be a step in the right direction. I think it would, you know, take advantage of the service that they've already given us and help them do the job even better than us. So, I'm going to vote for it.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, again, want to reaffirm that this has nothing to do with the individuals on the Board of Health and the work that they've provided to the city over the years that they've been on the Board of Health. This is, again, similar to what Alderman Jettie has mentioned, being proactive. And also, I mean, there are elephants in the room here. Since 2020, you can refer back to my comments in the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. I might be off on the digits exact, but overdose deaths in Nashua year over year are up 20% since 2020. We had our warm station, a warm housing station that was implemented, you know, basically in the spring that was still over 40% capacity. We have a clear homeless issue where we utilize a garage, I'm sorry, a parking lot with porta-potties or such. You know, it's best to get ahead of these things. That is my own professional health experience speaking. I know I don't practice my trade here, but I've been through this a long time. And I, it's going to get a lot worse before it gets better. And having that expertise that has a vote at the table will help our city, and it's for the betterment of the city. It has nothing to do with the great work that has already been done by the current board in the Department of Health, which is excellent. But it's about the future, how we can do better, and how we can improve ourselves.
I'm going to ask Alderman O'Brien to take the chair for a minute. Thank you. I'm not going to support this tonight. I was at the meeting that Alderman Moran and Alderman Timmons was at. The meeting was uncomfortable at best. It was, it was very uncomfortable, as a matter of fact. This was introduced before the Board of Health even knew about it. That's why we ended up at the meeting. Alderman Timmons and I, and Alderman Moran, and Dr. Storres. The meeting was short and uncomfortable. I agree with what Dr. Wolf Rosenbloom said, that it feels like this is just being shoved at us instead of working with us to figure this out. I will not support this. I appoint the Board of Health, and no one came to me and said anything to me about it, and no one said anything to the liaison about it. Not that you have to, but it's in the spirit of working together. And that's the main reason I will not support this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Point of order, would I be allowed to make the motion to move the question?
You can make that motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to move the question. And if I may speak briefly, I think everybody can.
No, you can't speak. Why don't you move the question?
I will not speak, and we'll let her stand. Thank you, Madam President.
The motion is to move the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. The motion before us.
Roll call.
Okay. Motion before us is that the report be filed with the city clerk to the effect that the text as stated in the resolution is the proposed charter amendment to be submitted to state officials in accordance with RSA 49B4. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
No.
Ten yays, five nays.
And that motion passes. I would like to have a motion to table. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to table.
The purpose of tabling this is so that the three other state official groups have their work to do before this can get put on the ballot. So, we will table it until that point. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion is tabled. That legislation is tabled. Oh, I want to note that Resolution 2435 is to remain tabled until after the Ad Hoc Capital Debt Committee decides the priority of bonded projects.
Second reading of R-24-049, approving the cost items of sidebar agreements between the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners and the five Nashville Police Department Unions regarding a police department recruiting incentive.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24049. I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this is something that has been agreed to by all of the unions in the police department, and it's an incentive to try and aid in getting police officers on the street. And I think because of the issues we're having with trying to get police officers hired, I think that it's certainly in our best interest to pass this.
Further discussion? I just wanted to say, you're right. I mean, we have a number of vacancies, and we need to fill those positions. So, anything we can do to help them recruit and retain officers, I think we should do. Alderman Sullivan.
I agree with you on that. Thank you, Madam President. I think recruiting of Nashville Police is very important, not just the here and now that we're about. Last count, I believe, I spoke to the chief the other day, we're about 20 short, approximate. And then if you look at the long-term picture of the city and the number of housing units that we're bringing online, I mean, the five-year projection of the size of our police force is going to be larger than where it is now. So, we could be running at a larger deficit. So, I think it's all hands on deck to try to get as many folks in the funnel for that department as possible. So, yes, I will be voting in favor of this.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to point out that a couple of years ago, it was seriously suggested by an Alderman at this board that we just hire like 500 police officers at $10 an hour, which was not accepted by this board. When you look at the demands of our police department, whether it's working with public health to make sure that they're doing crisis interventions and managing mental health issues, whether it's partnering with Bridges to do domestic violence intervention and then follow-up, or even just the various needs of community policing and making sure that in our increasingly dense neighborhoods and diverse populations, there's a degree of trust with our officers, we need the best. We can't start scaling down, and we can't look at strategies that are not going to be in our city's long-term interests. And so, I think working with them, listening to their unions, and recruiting the best of the best means that we will get candidates that we can choose confidently that we'll have serving our city for years to come.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2449 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-050, authorizing the sale of a portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway right-of-way.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion for final passage of R-24-050.
Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2450 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-051, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of grant funds pursuant to contract amendment number one in the amount of $307,393 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into various public health and community services grant activities.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move for final passage of R-24051 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. Discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, one nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2451 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-054, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2024 relative to the Community Development Block Grant CDVG Housing Improvements and Rental Improvements Programs.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Lopez.
So, briefly, I want to start by recognizing all the work that Urban Manager Long did, as he will be completing his service with the city and, I guess, starting new opportunities. So, I just wanted to thank him because it did come up in the meeting. And again, to the board members, I'm once again asking you to support this because the HUD process is to have us do multiple readings, do multiple public hearings, make 100% sure that this is seen and heard in our committee meetings. So, now it's coming back for its final reading.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2454 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-056, dissolving the Housing Expendable Trust Fund, establishing a housing revolving fund, and transferring funds into the housing revolving fund.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24056.
Further motion? Discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez.
I grilled Director Sullivan pretty directly on this because, to me, the nuances particularly associating with the Housing Trust Fund are important. He was able to satisfy my concerns. And Alderman Kelly represented the position of the Trust Committee as well. My only concern is that I don't want to see the city moving any further away from helping low-income, traditionally referred to as needy people. And when we start to use HUD funding, HUD definitions of affordable housing, we start to alter things from trust funds to revolving loans, I get very nervous. It's going to have to be up to the future Boards of Alderman and the Housing Fund Committee to make sure that we are using the money appropriately and we're doing what's best for our city. Because if they don't, people are not going to go away. They're still going to be here, and they're still going to be in need.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. Yes, Alderman Lopez mentioned the conversation that we had at the committee level as alternative to that board. And I've been at Alderman meetings with you, Alderman Wilshire, but I was explaining the changes to allow us some flexibility in being able to replenish the fund and be a little bit fiscally responsible in terms of what we're thinking this there. But the committee has been doing a lot of work to make sure that within our application and other processes that affordable marginalized housing is absolutely conducive to this fund, and it will be, you know, used as such moving forward. conducive to this fund and it will be, you know, used as such moving forward.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries and Resolution twenty-four fifty-six is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero one five changing references to the Housing Trust Fund.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O twenty-four dash zero one five.
Further motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries and ordinance, yeah, ordinance twenty-four fifteen is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero five eight naming Diatonio Drive.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Cle and myself. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero five nine naming the Barney C. Barbera Memorial Bridge.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to suspend the rules and allow for a second reading of zero dash twenty-four dash five nine.
You didn't call for additional sponsors. Should we have done it first?
I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you. Additional sponsors? Alderman Moran, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly and myself. Did we take a vote on that?
No.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero five nine naming the Barney C. Barbera Memorial Bridge.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage. May I speak briefly on this?
Alderman O'Brien.
As Chairman of Infrastructure, this came up and some things do come up rather quickly. But I think in listening to the remarks from the mayors today, that it sounds like that Mr. Barney Barbera was somebody who was very active within the community and needs rec- definitely deserving of recognition. So therefore, I do support the mayor and this, and I hope that you do too. When we worked on these bridges, it was with the veterans in mind. And so this seems to be keeping with the same flavor. So I urge you for your support. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So it's an honor for me to be able to co-sponsor this and support this tonight because I have known Barney for probably, geez, well, it was twenty-four years till he passed away that I knew him. And, you know, he served in the Air Force. He was in the, worked in civilian service for many years. Was on the Mayor's Veterans Council. Was in various roles in the American Legion. But I got to know him as a college student, working my way through college at Walmart. And he was the, in charge of the Sporting Goods Department. And if anybody knows anything about me, it's that I love camping and fishing. Well, so did Barney. And when we worked together, we got along very, very well. And I got to know him and through there and we would always discuss our various adventures, fishing and camping. And it was, it was there that when I first entered into politics, he was very supportive of me. And what he said was, "Don't ever forget the little, us little guys." And I never did. I never did. I never have and I never will. And so it's just very fitting tonight to be able to move this forward and name this bridge after, after him. And in a way, it's very fitting in two different ways. One is it honors his military service and his dedication to veterans by being the bridge, obviously, on the Veterans Memorial Parkway. But two, it spans the Nashville River. And the Nashville River is probably one of the best bass fishing rivers in all of New Hampshire. So it's a double tribute to a man who definitely deserves it. I'm very proud to support this. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm going to vote for this. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know the man. So I, you know, I wish we would have got a little bit more heads up that we were going to end up voting for this tonight so that I could research him a little bit. Mr. Alderman Senate showed me his bio a little bit, so I got a little bit of knowledge of him right before. But I just wish, you know, when we have to rush these things that at least we, because it is a big honor. So we want to make sure that I'll take Alderman Clemmons' word for it and I will vote for it tonight.
I agree with Alderman Clemmons. Barney was a great guy, very, very active veteran, very, very nice guy. Someone over here. Alderman Lopez.
I just want to add my voice that too. He's involved in the Parade Committee for a number of years. And I worked with him on American Legion issues, not a small number of times, actually. He's very personable. He's very down-to-earth. And I think, as Alderman Clemmons said, naming a bridge after him is a great idea. So I wish we'd done it like at the last supportive Alderman meeting. So we could have had it, you know, maybe as part of the parade, but maybe that's for the best since that got rained out anyway. I think this would be a great move and a great name for that bridge.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution twenty-four fifty-nine is declared duly adopted.
First reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero six zero relative to the acceptance and appropriation of three hundred and sixty thousand from Delta Dental into Public Health and Community Services. Grand activity smiles for tomorrow.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Thursday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P.M. in the Aldemantic Chamber. New business ordinances.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero one six regarding the time limit for public comment.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons. Given its first reading, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero one seven permitting certain funding transfers within the Public Works Division.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cle and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero one eight, no parking or stopping on a section of the east side of Manchester Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cle. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero one nine, reserving a parking space in front of Eight East Pearl Street.
Additional sponsors? Okay, I'll be an additional sponsor. And Alderwoman Kelly. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for public comments. Tonight, we have one, two, three, five people signed up. First person is Paula Johnson.
That's what happens when you get here early. You beat some of the Aldermen in here, so you get your name first on the list. My name is Paula Johnson. I'm still here and I still live at fifteen Westbourne Drive. I keep saying, the Alderman from Wadaid and I, we, you know, our minds are thinking like he's voting the way I would vote. I think that's great. You see, people from different parties can get along. I just want to talk about R dash twenty-four dash zero three three. And I think tonight, what happened here, I think it was an insult to the members of that board, the way this went down. I mean, you have a board. You wouldn't want them to come and interfere in your life on this board. You would be insulted if they came in and told you what to do on this board, that they didn't like how this board, Alderman Clemmons, I don't think it's funny. Because I think this is really serious. Because, you know, I'm going to tell you, you people would be insulted. That if they came here and said, you know what, you have fifteen members. I don't think you should have three at-large people. I think you should drop the three at-large and only have three at-large left. And you all would sit around and say, but they have no authority. They shouldn't be doing this. And you have to keep it in the hands of that board to make that decision. You could have tabled it, sat down with them as a professional board and said to them, how can we work this out together? Now you're going to put it on the ballot and this is going to be the biggest political thing in Nashville. Because you know why? You're going to ask people who are not in that industry, that don't have that background, should we vote for them to put two more people on that board and they know nothing about it? And it's going to be a tug-of-war here, just like what happened with the police commission. You're going to divide this city. You know, we have enough division in this country, what's going on right now. And you're going to divide the city up because there's going to be signs everywhere, "Vote yes, vote no" and people, and if it's not worded correctly on that ballot, people are going to think that voting one way and it's actually going to turn out the other way. It's happened in the spending cap in the past and it's happened on other pieces of legislation that hit the ballot. And so tonight, I was really shocked that you couldn't even sit down and say again, let's table this, let's have a roundtable discussion, and let's see what is really the need of the Health Department. And like Ms. Tim- Alderman Timmons, no, I was not a big fan of them during COVID. But you know what? I have to respect it and I have to respect their expertise because I'm not a doctor, I'm not a nurse, I'm not in that medical profession. And I think you all who voted for that did the wrong thing and an injustice to that department. Thank you.
Bradley Conway.
Good evening to the board. So my name is Bradley Conway from Manchester. So in the crazy week, in the headlines, like you might have seen, we can add the tent massacre to the list of other massacres altogether, which now totaled to at least thirty-six thousand people murdered with Nashville tax dollars enabled through the city's investments. Just to quickly recap the massacre, a refugee camp in Rafah was targeted by Israeli bombing and scores of Palestinian families were either burned alive in their tents or they were blown to bits as they were seeking refuge in a designated safe zone. Israel reports, self-reports, Israel self-reports that they are the most moral army in the world and yet every single one of their safe areas have been a farce intended to displace more people and so terror. There is no safe place in Gaza because the invading army is allowed to cut off food, clean drinking water, medical supplies, electricity, telecom services, journalists, murder with impunity, and effectively imprison the native population for what's now been almost two decades. As you know, our government has not only been providing heaps upon heaps of military aid to enable this extended catastrophe, it's also been providing political cover for several generations now. To negate our complicity as Americans, each one of us and most especially the leaders in this room, have a responsibility to take ownership of this crisis and do our part to end the genocide. We need to make sure that Nashville city funds aren't tied to the U.S. Israeli Military Industrial Complex. If there's one investment that the city council could identify and divest from as a symbolic gesture, take BAE for example, we would welcome that action as a step in the right direction. The fact is that once institutions like the city of Nashville start pulling their investments from companies who are profiting from the genocide, it pressures shareholders in these companies to realign their business interests with those of the residents of conscious in the city of Nashville. I want to thank Alderman Lopez for drafting a resolution for us. Thank you so much, Alderman. Okay. Although it doesn't mention divestment or ceasefire, Mr. Lopez has put in the work for all the constituents who came out to speak for Palestine solidarity here at the city by drafting a resolution that reflects the voice of Nashville residents. I think he did a really great job. At this point, we're really just negotiating language of the resolution with the Aldermen, but I hope you all get a chance to take a look at it in the near future and that you take it seriously. I hope that Alderman Lopez's resolution makes it to the floor and that maybe if you disagree with maybe the scope or relevance or of the city business, that you could either vote in favor of the resolution anyways, or that you could abstain from voting altogether. Please take action at the city level. By doing so, you could save lives and prevent unnecessary suffering. You might even help prevent the next massacre. Thank you so much.
Reagan Douglas. I hope I pronounced that right.
Where do you start speaking? It's right there.
My name is, sorry, my name is Reagan Douglas, twenty twenty-four Nashville South graduate. Today, I am here on behalf of my brothers and sisters suffering right now in Palestine. Today, I am here doing something no human should ever have to do, persuade those in power that mass killing thousands of innocent civilians is wrong. Under your watch, Israel's committed dozens of war crimes. White phosphorus, if it is used on purpose against humans in a civilian setting, it is a war crime. World Health Organization. The mass starvation of civilians. The use of starvation against a civilian population as a method of warfare is prohibited. The Red Cross. These are just two of these sixty-plus violations against international law that Israel's committed since October seventh, which are yet to be condemned. According to UN statistics, nine out of ten civilians in Gaza cannot eat every day. Civilians in northern Gaza, due to the complete blockade of humanitarian aid by Israel, also a war crime, have been found to survive, have been forced to survive on two hundred and forty-five calories a day, as opposed to the recommended two thousand calorie intake. This is the equivalent of eating three slices of bread a day. This is mass starvation. Four days ago, the ICJ demanded Israel halt its invasion of Rafah. Israel's response, by dropping a two-thousand-pound bomb of, on the tents of displaced, four days ago, the ICJ demanded Israel halt its invasion of Rafah. Israel's response, dropping a two-thousand-pound bomb on the tents of displaced civilians, killing fifty. This complete disregard for human life and international law has sparked rightful outrage across the globe. Nashville tax dollars, your tax dollars, are being used to commit genocide when they can be used to improve the education, infrastructure and healthcare of your citizens. What are you doing? You have the ability to end this tonight, to help save the lives of millions of Palestinians and help your own citizens. Take the step, make the change, pass a ceasefire resolution and fully divest from Israel. Free Palestine. Thank you.
Nicholas Calera.
Hello again, board. My name is Nicholas Calera of Tupatank Place here in Nashville. And I'm here once again to compel you all to draft, support and pass a resolution calling for a lasting and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. I wonder how many of you all witnessed the inexplicable horrors in Rafah this past weekend? Visuals of children, small children, smoldering in charge from American-made munitions, dropped from American-made planes and targeted with American-made reconnaissance. How many more of these images and videos are we going to be forced to sit through until you as a board finally grow a spine and say enough is enough? We had a rather fiery individual come last meeting and ramble about death counts in Dresden, Hiroshima and Nagasaki. Aside the fact that he believed that it was good that we firebombed the population of Dresden and then dropped not one but two nuclear bombs on the civilian populations of Japan, I'm not sure if he and others who may or may not agree with him on this board want to go down the path of extrapolating numbers to an American perspective. So far, upwards of forty thousand people have been slaughtered by Israel in Gaza. The real number is likely much higher as Israel has completely decimated any sort of civilian infrastructure within the healthcare system. Let's use forty thousand. Gaza, roughly, has a population of two-point-two million people prior to October seventh. Forty thousand is about two percent of two-point-two million. America has a population of roughly three-hundred-and-fifty million. So if Israel did to us what they are doing to Gaza, they would have slaughtered around seven million Americans, just for information, that is equivalent to the entirety of the state of Massachusetts. I wonder how many of you would stay silent as you are now if Massachusetts was wiped off the map by Canada? Again, I have to remind you as a board of your own past actions and present hypocrisy. I'm not one for hypocrisy baiting, mainly because I know far too many people in power do not care about hypocrisy, and therefore it isn't hypocrisy, it's just lying. But I digress. You all were more than happy to label Nashville as a city on the forefront of geopolitical issues after Putin's invasion of Ukraine, something I also agree was horrendous and illegal on many counts. The ICC agreed with you, and I as well, issuing arrest warrants for Vladimir Putin for his actions within Ukraine. Now that Prime Minister Netanyahu and Yoav Galant, the War Minister, have been indicted by the ICC and ordered to stop their offensive by the ICJ, I wonder now how many of you will finally say what we've been saying for months now that Israel is an apartheid state?
One minute.
I want you, I want to end with a paraphrasing of a talk given by the late, great Michael Jamal Brooks, who himself was Jewish but a virulent anti-Zionist. Jamal Brooks, who himself was Jewish but a virulent anti-Zionist. Brooks, who sadly passed away in two thousand and twenty, was always quick to critique those who, like many on this board, believed that the situation in Palestine was too complex or too difficult. I quote him here. It's not a complex issue, that's the big thing. It's super simple. There's one group that has enormous power, the most powerful country in the Middle East, it's backed by the United States. It acts on another population of people with total impunity and is never held accountable for anything. So there's no asymmetry, there's no symmetry in the relationship, period. We are told that this is complex, because Americans are lazy, and if it's complex, we don't engage. But this is not complex. One side has the power, the other side is a victim to genocide. If any of you on this board can still sit here after eight months of ruling and bloody crimes and still say it's too complex, I don't think you should be in politics. Politics is not a team sport. So while you all debate whether or not you wanna say something in regards to an ongoing genocide, children in Gaza will continue to try and survive without their parents, and parents will attempt to bury what is left of their children.
David Scalar.
He speaks better than I do. Hello, board and mayor. My name is David Scalar, Two Paddington Place in Nashua. Here once again to compel you to do something, you know, something. You know, nothing is the worst option. If you vote against a resolution, so be it. At least we'll know where you stand, and we can vote accordingly. I feel a bit out of place, being the old guy. This movement is a young-person movement, much like the civil rights movement, the Vietnam protests, South African apartheid movement, Occupy Wall Street, BLM, and many others, been led in part by young people. Listen to them. Honor them with your action, they are your constituents. It is relevant for a board to take action. Over a hundred and forty municipalities around the country, most recently Boston two weeks ago, larger municipalities, smaller municipalities have taken action on this. It is relevant for you to do so. It's not for you to ignore. I talked about my son, and I'll brag on him for a second. He was a North graduate, top-ten in his class, graduated from Boston College. He visited Palestine over the Christmas break of his senior year, year and a half ago. He's not a post-ten-seven radical. He published his senior thesis on the topic, and via you, Madam President, I wouldn't mind passing on a few of these, feel free to keep, take a look at it, and provide more as well. Let this thesis show us what is truly happening and why we can't be silent, because if you haven't noticed, because of Biden's absolutely horrific handling of this issue, unfortunately, Trump is likely gonna be elected. That's gonna solidify us as a fascist country. But my son is not the face of this movement. He will admit he's experienced a pretty privileged life, and though he's been called a terrorist, a cult member, racist, and anti-Semite by Nashua residents, one in particular who has bragged about assisting many of you in your campaigns, he knows he's gonna be just fine. The actual face of this movement are the children of Gaza. Many of them are now dead children. This weekend, after the bombs were dropped on a pre-designated safe zone in Rafah, they were decapitated in limbless dead, dead children. Remember those children as you choose to act or not, and anyone who chooses not to act, may the blood be on our hands. We will not stop. If this doesn't work, we'll find a method that does. The voices will not be silenced, and the lives of Gaza's children will not be forgotten. In my son's thesis, he ended it by saying, finally, the most presently, most presciently, this work is for the Palestinian people. I hope that this work does the cause justice, and even though I know words on paper will never fix the decades of history that have been lost. Within the weeks following the publishing of this, the seventh day of the morning of Nakba will occur, the people of the world will never be free until the Palestinian people are free, and I and countless others like me will not stop until that is the case, from the rivers to sea. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the board? I'm gonna start over here this time. Alderman Kelly?
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of things. I wanna clarify my ordinance regarding the time limit for public comment, so people don't think I'm trying to reduce public comment. I'm not. I'm actually looking to get rid of the thing that says fifteen minutes limit, because we never actually force it, so why have it there? Otherwise, we should start enforcing it. So I'm looking to remove that. I just didn't want harsh emails tomorrow, thinking I'm trying to cut any time limits. I'm not. Before we move the question, I didn't get to finish my thought on the Board of Health, and I wanted to say that I understand what Alderman Clemens was saying as far as the charter. It has to be part of the charter. I get that. But to say it's not political is, I wish we would just say it's gonna be political, because that's what it's gonna be. There'll be op-eds in the paper telling people which way they should vote, there'll be signs, like, there's already people coming up to me, trying to tell, tell me how to vote on this thing. So it, it will be political, and that's, it's fine. That's what it's gonna be. Let's just call it what it is, and not pretend like, you know, that's not the same thing. Well, it may not be the same thing, but it's still gonna be political, and we're gonna have to deal with, you know, five months of ads and signs and people trying to influence people's decisions so they understand the ballot question. I've been a moderator, and so has Alderman Senate, and I will tell you, people will come up and go, what does this ballot question mean? I don't understand it, because no one ever understands a ballot question. A lot of times, they're written in such crazy language that I can't even explain them to the, to the people, which we're not supposed to as moderators, anyway. Also, I just wanna clarify that I do not eat for free on Main Street, ever. Never, not once, before people take Alderman Moran's comment out of context. I was accused of that on, on Facebook, and I think that's where that comes from, and claiming that every, every restaurateur on Main Street is my best friend, and that is absolutely not true, and I rarely even go down there and eat. I should be eating there tonight, 'cause it's my anniversary. So I just wanna say, you know, happy anniversary to my wife, twenty-four years, she's sacrificing tonight, as I'm stuck here in a meeting, and, you know, I just wanna say happy anniversary, and it's been a tough year for her, so I just wanna leave it at that. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment that maybe I should've during a response to the remarks by the mayor, to congratulate the winners of the Gate City Light Award, but in particular, the Friends of the Nashua Public Library. Judy Blatchek, who is here accepting that award on their behalf tonight and is their president, is not only Ward Seven resident, but is also our Ward Seven clerk, and somebody who I've worked very closely with over the years, and I, I can say wholeheartedly that in terms of public service, even though she's an outstanding clerk in that ward, her first love is absolutely the library. And in conjunction with that, I'm sure, very close to the top of the list, she probably has a love for the amount of money that she takes from me every year during the Public Library's book sale, when I go downstairs into the nonfiction section and spend obscene amounts of money. I'm glad to see that that money is well shepherded and goes back to a worthy cause, so congratulations to her and to all the recipients tonight. Thank you.
On this side, anyone? Alderman Lopez.
First of all, because I don't know how many more meetings I'm gonna have, the Tree Streets Block Party is June fifteenth. It's a chance to celebrate the multicultural aspects of the Tree Streets, the community, and this year, we're focusing on supporting the Feed the Kids program. We're adding wrestling, so if anybody likes, is interested in professional wrestling, we're really excited to be trying that out. And then we have Flo Free Your Dice doing a bunch of musical presentations. Soul Sister is gonna be feeding the kids as they do. So you're all definitely welcome to attend. Secondly, with regards to the Free Palestine speakers that have been coming, when constituents reach out to me, I listen, and I think that's my role as Alderman, and I'm glad that they're feeling heard, and that there is something of worth in the draft that I'm working on. But I don't know that I've fully written anything that will create peace in the Middle East at this time, and I think there's more stakeholders that we need to engage as well. I was particularly impressed by Rabbi Spira Svet's willingness to listen, so I think that community needs to be heard as well. And I think in terms of what can really be done with a city resolution and ordinance that, or a city resolution that will reflect the will of the entire people, is, is a very complex question. I think we can all agree, we don't like to see children die, and I think we all can agree that a lot of what we've been seeing in Palestine and in Israel is horrific, and that we have higher entities that we look to for leadership in those areas. And for myself, as was mentioned, I am not interested in the divestment part of it specifically, because I think BAE as a company internationally, worldwide, is an idea and an institution, but BAE here in Nashua is a reality for many families and many people who work there, and they take pride in what they're doing, and they consider their contributions to the freedoms that we have. And I think it would be insensitive to call for something to that effect. So there's a lot more work to be done on that, but I am at least glad that people are, are feeling heard.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes. I've spoken at a few other committee meetings about my no-vote on the federal grant money. So just to be clear, as I've expressed in some of those meetings, I'm not necessarily opposed to the things that the federal grant monies are for. In case anybody hasn't noticed, our federal government is broke. They don't have the money, and us taking it makes us complicit, and I, we can't afford it. So this is why I say no to the federal spending. It's not for what the money's for, it's where the money's from.
Alderman, Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to acknowledge that there's five veteran females on the Veteran Memorial Parkway, and I counted them as I was driving through. It did make me happy, being a female veteran myself. That's the first time, I believe, they were up there, and it looked very good.
Yeah. You know what I'm saying. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to take a little personal privilege. As many of you know, I was recently hospitalized. I really would like to thank all those that did come to see me. Life is entertaining when you're sitting in a hospital room in your Johnny, and people come in, particularly of the opposite sex, but I'll tell ya, I got the legs swarted, so it was good. But I was completely out of it. I really wanna thank N.F.R., Nashville Fire Rescue. They came and got me twice, and got me out of the house. I had no clue. I mean, I'm actually a guy sitting here, missing time. I have no idea where it went. But then, when you get the medication, and you're in the hospital, and you got a wonderful plethora amount of great nurses and doctors that are working around the care that went to Southern Hampshire, I'm sure St. Joe's is equally up to par, but I'll tell ya, it was a fantastic group. It worked all good, particularly the point that allowed Diane, my lovely wife, to stay at home and conduct some much-needed respite, particularly away from me, 'cause I was about ready for the rubber room, you know? They actually, yes, they did have me tied to the bed, and the beds were alarmed, so I couldn't get up and escape, and, you know. Oh, yes, I was supposed to, but I took the nose tube out, and they put it back. I mean, I weren't the first time, okay, so, you know. But I'll tell ya, what a great bunch. I don't think I was the best patient in there, but thank, I thanked them all for understanding, and it worked all good, and I'm here tonight as a testimony to their professionalism, so I thanked them all. God bless them. Thank you.
We're glad to have you back.
I'm glad to be back. Always good to be on the right side of the law.
Committee announcements. Alderman Dow.
Yeah, just real quickly, because they're different times. Next coming week, Wednesday at seven fifteen, budget review; Thursday at seven thirty, budget review; and next week, on Tuesday and Thursday, budget review at seven P M.
Other committee announcements? Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Since I'm back in the saddle, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at nine ten P M. Thank you, everyone.